This is Election 2021, the Las Cruces City Council Forum for District 5. Thanks for being with us. KRWG Public Media has partnered with the League of Women Voters of Southern New Mexico to present these events. District 5 candidates are Becky Ann Coran, Norman Robert Paquette, Ronnie Cisneros, and David Telford. Our rules today are simple. The candidates have one minute to answer each question, and they should not mention an opponent in their answer. Becky, we start with you for the first question. Why are you running for city council?
Thank you so much for having us, Fred, and the League of Women Voters. They say that for a woman to run for office, you have to ask them seven times. And I probably had been asked two or three times. And in 2016, I participated in an Emerge New Mexico program, which recruits and trains Democratic women to run for office and win. And since then, I've been thinking about and being asked with some regularity. Now I've exceeded seven times to think about running for office. The other thing that's been happening during that time, I've been teaching at the community college. I've taught thousands of students. And what I hear from them are their challenges, their experiences, and their hopes for their future. And I think the city council is a place where we make a lot of decisions that can shape that future, make it bright. And so I really want to serve my community in that way.
Thank you. Robert?
Yes, you know, I've lived in Las Cruces for more than 25 years, and I've owned a business. And for most of that time, I've been involved in some city government functions. I've volunteered and been involved in community programs and organizations. And I've really given of myself all this time for years in Las Cruces. And I've seen a lot of things here in Las Cruces that I know we can do better at. I don't like to point the fingers at anybody or anything, but I see it clearly. I have an IT background as well, social media, I got marketing and communications. What I want to do is unite us as a city. I see opportunities to do that with technology, where we can move together as one and have one voice and communicate with City Hall and put amazing tools into the hands of our city councilors to be able to move us in the direction that we want to go in as a city. It's unprecedented what I'd like to do, and I think it could help us all solve our problems together as a community.
Thank you. Ronnie?
Hello. I'd like to thank this opportunity to attend this forum. The question is, why did I want to decide to run for city council here in Las Cruces? To me, the reason is simple. I'm running for the sake of my grandchildren, for the sake of my community. I do not believe that Las Cruces, the city council, the present city council accurately represents the will of the people. And I want to represent the will of the people in my district in District 5. Things have changed. I was born here in New Mexico. I was born originally in Roswell. I've been here for 17 years as an occupational therapy assistant. Things have drastically changed. And I don't want the traditions, values, and the people of Las Cruces, in the city of El Paso, to be disregarded. And that's why I'm running to represent that.
Thank you, Ronnie. David?
Yes, sir. Thanks a lot. The reason I'm running, I've been here working with the community, trying to make it a better community, for 40 years. Been on many boards and many committees and different advisory committees and volunteered and holding Chalala Fiesta and Fourth of July Committee and everything, just trying to make this a better place for everybody who lives there. And most importantly, my family, I've been blessed. I owe this city. I came here after I got out of the Army to finish my college education on the GI Bill and met my wife here. She's gotten all her degrees here up to being a doctor of nursing practice at the hospital. My two daughters got their degrees here and worked at the hospital. One of them's a neonatal intensive care nurse. So I mean, I've been blessed to have them all be able to get their lives and their careers here and stay here.
Thank you, Robert. David, Robert, we're going to start with you for the next question. What experiences have contributed to your qualifications for city council?
That's a great question. You know, before I came to Las Cruces 25 years ago, I lived in the city of Seattle. And one of the main career paths that I had in Seattle was medical, a career where I was emergency medical tech. I drove an ambulance. I volunteered in the community. I was a caseworker. I had a caseload of 27 people. Then I got into IT as well in Seattle before I moved here. And then unfortunately, the medical field didn't pay as well as it did in Seattle. So I went to Doniana College and got my degree in IT and communications. And then I began, I started a marketing company, and I've been doing marketing for about 20 years in Las Cruces. And I joined many Chamber of Commerce committees and marketing committees. And I've been very involved in the community since then. And I have a very vast treasure chest of experience in technology and solutions for our--
All right. Thank you very much. And Ronnie, move to you.
And the qualifications, I think that as an occupational therapist assistant, you have to interact and come to some solutions and problem solving with a variety of different clinicians, such as social workers, directors of nursing, also program directors, as well as the families. And as a result of that, you can build a consensus, a team effort in regards to addressing patient-specific needs. That right there qualifies me to be able to, I like to work as a team. I like to see an issue, see a problem area, address that, and move on to the next one. And I believe, in addition, that add to is my lifelong volunteer work that I've done since I was young. I've been involved in various different things, such as the mayor's team here in Las Cruces regarding census, graffiti removal, boxing club. I was a coordinator there in Roswell, as well as--
Okay. Thank you very much, Ronnie. David, we move on to you.
Okay, well, over the last 30 years, working in marketing and advertising, I've spent every day of those years meeting with six, seven, sometimes eight businesses a day and finding out what their challenges are. And I've learned a very unique, I've had a very unique experience in talking to them one-to-one and hearing about them and trying to solve those problems. And in my post as an advertiser and a marketer to help them solve those issues and see their frustrations and challenges, it's really inspired me to work. And so many of them ask me after they've had trouble with the city and everything, why don't you run for office so you can do something about it? So that's what I've done. My parents have been an inspiration to me. They're servant leaders. They've made me a servant leader. That's why I've worked on all these committees and spent all those years as a volunteer. And now I would like--
Okay. Thank you very much, David. Becky?
I have spent 20 years as an educator and public health professional. This is included working with the Centers for Disease Control, most recently this summer, training frontline workers to prevent infection, also with the American Red Cross. And then in my job that I've had for a long time, where I've been a faculty member and worked my way up to professor and department chair over a department of about 55 full and part-time faculty and about $1.5 million in terms of revenue and output for the college. In that capacity, I've also taken on big challenges that I have worked together with large diverse groups of people, building Habitat for Humanity House, reducing bias in student evaluations in the NMSU system. I'm a collaborator. I communicate and I look at the big picture. And I want to bring that to the city council.
Thank you. For question three, we start with Ronnie. Ronnie, what is the role of city government in addressing poverty? Explain.
The role of addressing poverty within city government, that is a very difficult question to answer. And I think that to answer that question fully, it would require not only municipal government, but state and federal entities to participate in a long-term effort in regarding poverty. You could say that, okay, we need to bring more high-paying jobs here to Las Cruces. You could also say that we need to reduce the tax burden on the homeowners here in Las Cruces to alleviate the extra expense. Also, we could address as well as the larger stakes and the bond issues that add another regulation and expense to overall people here, thereby causing poverty and decreased amount of wages that they can utilize to either purchase a home, buy things that they need, education materials for their children, or for themselves for that matter.
Okay. Thank you, Ronnie. Can you mute your sound in between the questions? We're getting a little background noise there. David, we move on to you.
Yes, well, I think what we could do, and I believe this in so many other areas, is to enter into public-private partnerships with companies and entities that can help on that. There's a lot of them in the national picture that can tie in with that. We can get grants. I used to write grants for the city. And we can get grants. We can get loans and incentives from other partnerships and put ours in there to help incentivize builders and developers to build more of the moderate-income homes. And that would be the quickest and fastest way that we could do that. And then also, which I always say is simplify the permitting process. I have brother-in-laws that are builders, and it's just so difficult, so onerous to try to get things done. It ends up costing so much more money. If we could streamline that, simplify it.
Thank you, David. Becky?
The city can augment or expand their partnerships with community organizations like Campo, Casa de Peregrino, as happened yesterday, Families Incorporated, agencies that are already connected to people in the community and helping reduce poverty. Additionally, there's an opportunity to create partnerships with businesses that in particular support their employees who seek education, providing healthcare, ensuring the basic needs of folks in the city. And then finally, I think we need to embrace some forms of innovation. Recently, we passed the Community Solar, the state passed the Community Solar item, which includes 30% allocated for low-income communities in particular. Guaranteed basic income is an innovation that the city is talking about now and working on, again, with community agencies. So I think embracing innovation and finding new ways to address poverty in Las Cruces is critical.
Thank you. Robert? Mike, your mic is off there, Robert.
I apologize. Thank you, Fred. The question was, what is the role of city government regarding poverty? And the role of city government regarding poverty is to help those in poverty in our own community, because those people are people. They're voting citizens, and they deserve good things in life like the rest of us. A lot of people in poverty aren't there because they want to be there. They're there because of circumstances in their life, or there's problems or issues that we all have to face on a daily basis. The role of city government is education and helping those people rise up out of poverty and to be able to do the things that they want to do for themselves, because most of them do. Nobody really likes to be in poverty. Nobody really likes to live that way. And people are always trying to better themselves, most people at least. So the role of city government, I believe, is to educate and help and form bonds and community action organizations, maybe not, what do I say, official organizations, but community-based engagement organizations that can help solve this problem together as one voice, as a community.
Thank you. For question four, we're going to start with David. What is your opinion about using general obligation bonds for affordable housing and why?
Well, I think it's something that's important, as far as affordable housing, as we can see and we've just discussed, we need more and more of it. So depending on what the stipulations are and whatever the specifics and financing and payback and everything those general obligation bonds are, I would have to look into it and see if it's practical, if it's cost-effective, and how people feel about that. But I think it would be something that we could use. I'm all about trying to find different revenue sources to solve our problems.
Thank you. Becky?
District 5, this is a very acute issue. We see a lot of developments appearing and a lot of unaffordable housing in our district. That's not to say that it shouldn't be here, but I think there are a lot of threats and sticks that the city can use, in particular in relating to developers, leveraging existing impact fees that are already levied, and then potential funding through things like GO bonds. We can look into ways of promoting infill, public-private partnerships. I would also say that the city could invest in something like an affordable housing trust so that there's room to compete on the private market to ensure that there is enough affordable housing in the market for the people of the city.
Thank you. Robert?
Yes, thank you. Concerning the GO bonds, it's quite a touchy issue, as we heard just a minute ago. But the thing I want to point out about GO bonds is that it's not money that we have generated, it's not revenue. It's actually like a loan type of thing, and it's backed solely by the credit and taxi power of the issuing jurisdiction rather than revenue from any given project. We kind of have a debt that we start getting, and then we're going to be taxed for it later. What I would recommend is try to find solutions now instead of just trying to get the credit to fix the problems now, because then we're going to have that problem later on in the future, too. We need to solve the problems now instead of just trying to put Band-Aids and money on it and then expect us and our kids to pay for it later. You know, I'm not totally against it, because I don't know everything about it, but from the surface, what I've heard about it, that's kind of what I feel about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ronnie? We need your mic, Ronnie. We need your mic.
In regards to the general obligation bonds, I pretty come down on the line of that there's nothing wrong with providing housing. Absolutely. If Las Cruces has grown, there's 115,000 within the city right now, 210,000 within the county. There is needs, absolutely. But are these needs going to provide for these people to be able to purchase these homes, or is this only rental housing? In other words, by that, so that means that the homeowners, the homeowners through the general obligation bonds are going to be paying for these people to be living in these rent-fees homes. And who's going to be managing that? The city of Las Cruces, I assume. My alternative is, what about some options? I mean, what about some options for them to be able, as I said before, to be able to get in this home, and then they have somewhat of a self-investment in the home to take care of it, manage it, care for the grounds, because this property is now there.
Thank you very much, Ronnie. Ronnie, thank you. For question five, we're going to start with Becky. Becky, do you believe the city police department needs to make any more changes with regard to use-of-force policies? Explain.
The city police department already has respect and community as part of, essential to their sort of functioning. And I know that they've had a significant amount of accountability in the past few years, especially when Las Cruces did not show well in a number of surveys and data points about use of force. So things that the police force could use now is careful analysis, using evidence-based sort of practices to understand how their de-escalation techniques that they've already employed might be able to, what are the most effective de-escalation techniques? And then I would also say we're at a junction where we have things like the 988 Mental Crisis, Mental Health Crisis Line coming online, the Crisis Triage Center, and mental health units that are also going to help to address those potential use-of-force situations that the police have been encountering and help de-escalate those situations more.
Thank you very much. Robert?
Yes, thank you, Fred. Concerning the police in Las Cruces and the use of force, I've put a lot of thought into this, and it all ties into one of the reasons why we're not replenishing our police force. If I was a police officer and I was looking at Las Cruces, there's two things that I would be worried about. One is the attitude of the citizens here against police officers. For the most part, it's not a positive attitude, it's a negative attitude. And secondly, there's no immunity for police officers. That was removed. So if I was to have a career in Las Cruces and come here, I would be afraid that I would lose my career in a heartbeat if I made one mistake. And the public's not too thrilled towards me either. What I would do is look at that immunity clause and maybe come up with an in-between solution that would please everybody in Las Cruces, and then put more education into our police force, into the use of restraint and the use of doing their duty without the use of extreme force.
Ronnie?
Okay. In regards to the police department, I will go, and as I will publicly and inform taking the policy of that I would not take an armchair quarterback in regard to what the police officers do in performance of their duty. I must align somewhat with my fellow candidate there, that I don't blame them. It's a difficult job. It's a difficult job. I wouldn't want to do it, especially for the pay that they receive. And when I'm elected to city council, I want to be able to do something, first and foremost, to increase their pay, number one, and then let them know that they have the support of this city council in District 5.
David?
Yes, I agree with all the other candidates so far. And I think one thing that is our challenge as far as that goes is that we are so understaffed. And as I said, with good reason, why do they want to come here and put their life on the line and their careers on the line if it mean the end of their careers? And we're running like 50-plus short on people. We need to get some good incentives in there to hire and retain more officers. We could work with, they already have that Citizens, yeah, Police Service Aid Program that would help with the police's workload. And also, as someone else mentioned, is having counselors go out with them when there's a mental health component in there. I spent several years doing public relations for Southwest Counseling Center. We started a program at that time where we had a counselor on, a therapist on call 24/7 to go out with the police when they went.
Okay. Thank you very much, David. We move on now to question six, and we're going to start with Robert for this. Do you support a citizen review board to examine police department actions? Explain. Robert?
That's a very good question. That goes right into what I want to do when elected. I want to have us as the citizens of Las Cruces move, think, feel, and see everything as one. I want a 30,000-foot view for all of us to share on not just this issue or problem, but many other ones in Las Cruces. And everybody knows that more information is better and less information is worse. And if we can bring more information into the hands of City Hall, into the hands of our councilors, and into our own hands to see what our neighbors feel and think, and what all of us as a community think, and with all the demographics, we can make a lot better decisions with all the problems and challenges that we face. And that's what I want to say about that.
Thank you. Ronnie?
No, I do not support a citizens' review board. The reason that I do not is because I believe there's already stuff in place to monitor the police and what's going on and what, they've already got policies and procedures that have been established for decades and decades and decades. So I think the things that occur, I'm not concerned about what occurs 5,000 miles from here on the West Coast to the East Coast. I'm only concerned about what happens here in Las Cruces, in Mexico. So no, I do not support a citizens' review board.
Thank you. David?
Yes, I kind of tend to agree with Ronnie. It's something that's important, that needs to be looked at. But the more and more we add the bureaucracy to the system, the more it grinds so hard. I had someone at a church I went to a long time ago that said, committee is a four-letter word. Quite often, it ends up becoming a big mess. Definitely, we need oversight, but I think we have enough oversight in place. It's a question of these other things that we've already talked about, making sure they're in there, getting our police supported by us and get their police force up to strength and using public-private partnerships to get more force in there, possibly some better, more conservative judges to do a little more about those people that commit the crimes and stop some of the recidivism.
Okay. Thank you. Becky?
Yes, I support a citizens' review board. I think there are a lot of models that have worked really well. And this is a place where citizens can be engaged in accountability. And most of the research in situations where things like the citizens' review board or body cams are introduced, it ultimately ends up protecting officers almost as much as it does the citizens of the city, because that transparency is really fundamental to building trust within community. And so I think as a trust-building entity, citizens' review boards are one of the tools that would be very useful in promoting that.
Thank you very much. For question seven, we begin with Ronnie. How should the city manage the development of the recreational cannabis industry? Ronnie?
That's a hard question to answer. I don't even know where to start, to be honest. I believe that they're already in, the city council is working on those measures to develop certain procedures. I don't even know where to start, to be honest. It's an issue that I would have to get, what are the parameters? What are the parameters regarding how much can be, how are you going to determine who is impaired, when they're impaired, to what degree are they impaired? It's, I don't know what to say on that. It's such a difficult question in regards to Las Cruces City Council and how they're going to address this effectively while at the same time protecting the public and the police officers who are trying to enforce it. It's somewhat of a, as my fellow candidate said, it's a bureaucracy turned into a monster.
Okay. Thank you. David?
Yes, once again, as we're talking, it will involve some bureaucracy, and it will involve a lot of work to get it, a model set up to maintain. But that worked with alcohol. I know that this is a much more subtle and layered problem with cannabis and hopefully less use in that sense, more for the health and maybe calming effects or whatever. But the good thing about it is, since it has been legalized now, we can legislate it. We can control it. We can put some parameters on it and get taxes from it, which will help our city. Instead of just people doing it illegally and the money goes to something else, we can do something positive with it, including help to take care of it or watch over it. And I think that would help, because it's happening.
Okay. Thank you. Becky?
I gesture to my colleagues. It is happening, and the state has set outlines, the city has set outlines. And it is an economic, it's a lane and an economic recovery journey. I think that there are a whole bunch of associated potential economic benefits that do things like testing, regulation, security. I think there are a number of places where this is going to be a really speedily developing thing. But the reality is, in the United States, half a million people a year die from tobacco-related causes. So there is some space to say, just because something's legal doesn't mean that we want everyone to be using it. And so I think really thinking thoughtfully about how we approach it and the kinds of norms that we present in our community are also really important as we develop the economic benefits.
Thank you. Robert?
Thank you, Fred. Of course, moving forward with this initiative is something that we all have to work to make safe for the entire community. And I agree with Becky with that. I'm sorry, I mispronounced. I agree with that. But I do want to bring up the fact that I am very excited about the possibilities for the cannabis industry and for the tax revenue income in Las Cruces because of it. Once we are able to regulate or get it under control so that we know what we're doing as a city, and I'd like to infuse that into some fantastic plans that we should have for tourism, because tourism is growing in Las Cruces, and the cannabis industry is the perfect marriage, you might want to say, for that. And I see a great future for us economically in Las Cruces for our future with both tourism and the cannabis industry. That's it.
Okay. Thank you. For question eight, we're going to start with David. David, what are the strengths of city government?
Well, it can be said by different people, the strengths and weaknesses, depending on how you look at it.
Let's start with strengths. We're going to get to weaknesses.
Yeah, let me just say that either there's can be two sides of it. But yes, I think they're in a good place. They have responded well with people, and they have this, you can watch the city council meetings online, which I do a lot, if I can't get down there. And so, and I think they've addressed these issues, many of the issues we have, and many they've solved. They have a lot of projects in-- and many they've solved. They have a lot of projects in the works. So many of the people I've talked to that are concerned about things, you know, I tell them, okay, well, there is a program for that, and this is happening for that. You know, maybe that needs to be tweaked and worked. But from what I've seen, there's a lot going on that's positive. You know, I went through a leadership program with the city where we went out each Wednesday night to different departments and got to see how it worked and everything.
All right, thank you very much, David. Becky?
I think sort of getting to what my colleague is mentioning, there is a level of accessibility in Las Cruces. Like people call us up, email us, can visit us, and I love that we're so engaged with both our city counselors and our state senators and representatives. It's great. It's one of the best things I can imagine in terms of local government. Being a city counselor and being accountable to that is really important and making sure that you keep those voices in your head. The other thing I would say is our frontline workers, especially the firefighters who made it through COVID emergency responders, they're doing mental health response, flu and renal response. I just want to give a shout out to the firefighters who have been out there and making it happen all this time, so.
Thank you. Robert?
Yeah, that's a great question, strengths and weaknesses. Over the years, I'll tell you some of the strengths I've really noticed in City Hall, regardless of whether we agree or not with politics and lines, the strengths that City Hall has is teamwork. They stick together. They try to do the job their best they can. Their hearts are in it. That's a great strength, and you need teamwork and you need solidarity in order to make things happen and move things in a city this size. I'd say one of the weaknesses that we have is that, and we're trying, is that is to bring the city together as one in unity and really take the pulse of the citizens of this city in a more, in a faster way, in a way that we can make smarter decisions.
Okay, thank you. And we conclude now with Ronnie on the strengths of city government.
The strengths of city governments, municipal government here in Las Cruces, I think Las Cruces is a great city. I think there's a lot of things here that are done quite well, as a matter of fact, even superior to other cities throughout the state. One is the infrastructure that is in place in regards to police department, to schools, the parks and recreation and the businesses and things of that like. Some of the things I don't agree with, but that's not necessarily a weakness. But Las Cruces is continuing. It's not going to stop growing. And it's just that we don't want to forget our history and our past as well.
Okay, thank you. For question nine, we begin with Becky. Becky, what are the weaknesses of city governments?
No, I think the accessibility is a strength, but also in that capacity, when I was starting the campaign, I said that I was determined to make sure that all of my campaign literature was available in English and Spanish. And someone said to me, there aren't any Spanish speakers in District 5. And that suggested to me that perhaps city government is only accessible to certain folks. And I know that historically excluded populations, and I've been knocking on the doors of folks in our district who say, I've never been visited by a city counselor. And to me, bringing those voices forward is really critical while serving on the city council. And I don't want to perpetuate any of those historical sort of exclusions.
Thank you. Robert?
Thank you, Fred. One of the main weaknesses, and we know the weaknesses isn't necessarily a bad thing. It's something that we need to work on. But I see one of the main weaknesses of City Hall is really, City Hall's not able, doesn't have the capability to be able to take the pulse of our community like we should be able to. As a democracy, we need to be represented by those that we put into office. And they need to be able to understand what we all as a community want and can feel instead of election time. And that doesn't really happen, but on a small scale. And I can tell you, in three minutes at City Hall, you can't really explain everything or represent your entire community, and the entire community can't come down at City Hall either. So what we need is a better communication system, and I think that's the weakness in City Hall right now.
Thank you, Ronnie.
I agree with my fellow candidate there, that listening to the community, that's one thing that I have, that has deteriorated since I've been here in Las Cruces. I think Las Cruces was quite representative of the people when I was here and then many years before that, as I came here to Las Cruces many, many times before. They're, for lack of a better word, they're just doing whatever they want to do, irregardless of whatever the world, the people says. And they need to listen to what the people are saying, the people that elected them, the people that put them into office, and regardless of, and you can see there's favoritism as well going on.
Okay, thank you very much for, David, we're going to conclude with the weaknesses of city government. David?
Yes, well, I think one of the things, you know, whether it's a fault or not, or what the fault is, is that turnaround time, that response time, getting back to people and getting to, you know, constituents who need things and, you know, the communication avenue needs to be streamlined. It needs to be, you know, sped up and so where they can get back to people and the people when they have problems. I've talked to many of them out there, say that it's frustrating. I can't get through to my counselor, or when I do, then it takes so long to get that, you know, response or some action on it. So definitely it's about going out and about and talking to people and speeding up that response time and getting it done.
Okay, thank you. For question 10, we are going to start with Robert on this one. Question 10, how should the city work to foster economic development? Robert?
Oh, that's a terrific question. I've been thinking about that for years. And this is how we need to work as a city. We need to come together and bring the components of tourism in our city together. Again, unity is the key. Unity is the key to everything. So we get the hotels together, we get the tourist industry together, we get downtown together, and we come together and come up with a solution for incentives to then work with our tourist industry in Las Cruces, to visit Las Cruces, to reach out to everyone else and offer these awesome deals to visit Las Cruces. And so what we need is unity. We need to work together. We need to come together. We need to have plans, and we need to all give a little bit for the betterment of our whole community.
Thank you. Ronnie?
In regards to the question of fostering development here in Las Cruces, I think that that's an excellent question, and I would like to defer that to our president city manager. And what I mean by that is his responsibility is to bring that here into town. I would, what is kind of like what we've talked about here recently is people kind of going outside of their lane, outside of their lane, and then what do we have? We have a monster, bureaucracy monster that's not getting done. I think that we need to support the president city manager and let him do his job that he was hired to do. I believe he's qualified and to, and just support him in whatever that he needs to proceed forthwith.
Thank you, David.
Yes, you know, I agree. I think that we just, it's, I start from the business point of view because that's what I've done for the 30 years and talking to the businesses and what their challenges are. I think the more we work with business and grow business and help them expand, bring more products and services here, not only is that better for us and our kids and our families, you know, for entertainment and for, you know, those services and products, but also expands the business community, which, you know, in turn brings more business in here and more people in here. We've done so much being on the Forbes 500 mini list for, you know, for retirees and places to move because we have great medical services here and everything. So we use that along, like with the New Mexico True and the other advertising campaigns to highlight our city, to get those people here.
Thank you very much, Becky.
I think economic recovery that centers the folks of Las Cruces. That is, I know my students, they're extraordinarily talented and they want to work in jobs that give them opportunities to advance, to show their talents and their skills and to raise a family here. So I think whatever kinds of economic recovery actions we might take, they should center the people who will be working in those settings and make sure that the businesses that, if the city is involved in terms of public-private partnerships or incentivizing things, that they're valuing the workers and the talents and giving folks a path upward in terms of their social mobility. So I think that's fundamental to our economic recovery, the talent of the people that are in here.
Okay, we're going to move on now to question number 11. The city has recently asked for tax increases to fund capital projects. Would you like to see the council find ways to use current funds rather than asking for tax increases? Explain, and we begin with you, Ronnie.
Absolutely not. What I want the citizens of Las Cruces to take an additional burden upon themselves. The people of Las Cruces have had enough of 18 months of financial really upheaval as a result of COVID-19. It's been tough on everybody. To ask people to pay more additional tax, I think is unconscionable.
Okay, David?
I agree. I think there's other avenues of revenue that we can tap. You know, we have the tailshaw fund. We have the fund that I used to, you know, when I was on the Health and Advisory Committee, you know, where we gave out, you know, $300,000 every year to different organizations, nonprofit. You know, we could use that money and the tailshaw fund, different avenue streams to do that instead of raising people's taxes, you know. And once again, the public-private partnerships to bring money from the outside, write grants, and there's a lot of ways to get a lot of money from places that have more money than our citizens, which is, you know, very lean right now.
Thank you, Becky.
I think diversified funding across the board is called for, including tapping other places, as my two colleagues have mentioned, things like impact fees that are really taxes that have already been levied on folks who bought new houses, for instance. But I do think that when I talk to voters, one of the things they say is, this city is great. I love the services that I have, and I would like us to do more, have more parks, have more police departments. I would really like an arts sort of center on the, in District 5. You know, those are the kinds of things that folks are saying. And I know that those sometimes exceed what our revenue might be if we think about the rules that relate to how we spend. And I think, I hear those too. And so I do think that taxes are another form, but I believe in progressive taxing, not regressive taxing on the folks who make the least.
Okay, thank you. Robert, we conclude with you.
Thank you, Fred. Taxes, taxes, taxes. We're all tired of taxes, aren't we? It's like, you know what, I say, I don't mind paying the taxes if I have services, but the problem is, is that we all pay taxes. No one really had a say-so in it. And we wish we did because I guarantee you that if I had a say-so and raised taxes and I said, you know, that's a good idea. I'm going to raise this. I'm with you, then I would feel a lot better about that and we'd have less problems and friction in City Hall raising taxes. But unfortunately, should we increase taxes or should we use funds? I don't think we should do either. I think we need to go to the table, use our brains, use our heads, and try to come up with, do some work, you know, and try to come up with solutions that we can work together towards. And the thing I want to do is bring this vote Las Cruces app. We all can work together. We can solve these problems all together if we all know what's happening. And so, no, I'm not for tax increases, but I am for thinking about the problem and really coming up with solutions as a community instead of just running to the tax solution every time.
Okay, we've got about 12 minutes or so left in the program, and we're going to move to question 12 now. Should the city reallocate funds to improve the conditions of roads and other infrastructure? Explain, and David, we begin with you on this.
Yes, well, it depends on, you know, what you mean by reallocate funds, where those funds come from. But we are sorely in need of infrastructure improvements. I know up here in District 5, we have areas that are nice. You know, my son-in-law and daughter just built a house up in Metro Valley. It's beautiful there. They have nice walking paths. We take the babies out. And it's awesome there, curbs and gutters. Everything's very well planned and very well done. But then as you head further east out on our, in our district, towards, you know, towards the mountain, you get out there and there's places that don't have the curbs and gutters. They don't have decent roads. They have potholes and everything. So we certainly need that money. Let's see where that comes from. If I get in there, then I can research that and see where we can pull that money. But it's something we certainly need.
Becky?
Yes, I think reallocation is in order, in part because even though we're here to serve District 5, I know that the city of Las Cruces, places like the Solano-Alpesao corridor, I think that there's a lot of work being done to revitalize that area, to make it a place where people want to go and that it can be part of our community. And so I think in terms of reallocation, at least at a district level, I think that there is room for us to see where the gaps are, where we need new development, where we need support of the infrastructure, even, and you mentioned the eastern part, but even the far western part near, that's off of Elks. A lot of folks there have very serious issues with the traffic and the roads. And so I think thinking about places within our district, but then also citywide, where we can leverage money and even match money from grants and other things to make sure that we're bringing the entire city of Las Cruces up is critical.
Thank you, Robert.
Hey, thank you. That's a really good question. Should we reallocate funds to roads and infrastructure? And my first question when I hear that is, reallocate from where? Where is it coming from? Who's going to lose? Where was it? Was it allocated somewhere else? I don't know that answer, and it's not really relevant at this moment. But the next thing is, you know, I think we do need to have funds for infrastructure, for roads, especially down in the Elks area where there's traffic and there's a lot of problems with accidents and safety issues and traffic. It's a little bit crazy and squirreling some areas down, I might want to say. But we need infrastructure for the upcoming tourism that we're going to be getting in Las Cruces. And I see it coming, we have to look at which areas of the city that we want to plan to have the infrastructure upgrades in relation to and in conjunction with our plans for tourism growth and economic growth. So that's what I think about that.
Thank you. Ronnie?
In regards to reallocation, I defer to my fellow candidate there. How do you mean to reallocate it and take it from where to meet to what? Is there an need? Absolutely, there is a need. I have spoken with several people, more than several as a matter of fact, there who live in District 5 on Mesa Grande, in April. That were, and I have seen them on numerous occasions, literally hundreds of kids going to Monate High School. And there is no sidewalk going from Monate High School all the way out for, literally, like about three blocks from Batan Memorial. There is no sidewalk either, either side of the street, east or west. And so all of these kids have to walk through the mud and the rain and the snow or whatever it is. And people say, well, why don't they take the bus? Well, there is thousands of people who are living in that area. And I want to represent those people because they do need some sidewalks, appropriate infrastructure infrastructure.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Becky. We're going to begin with you on question 13. What else can the city do to encourage downtown development?
I think downtown development, not only can we sort of make sure that we're investing in the infrastructure, as you mentioned, so that things like the farmer's market can, is, remains accessible and that the businesses there feel like they have, are able to maximize their customer base. But I think also thinking about downtown development in terms of how businesses can expand in terms of outside seating, where folks are able to interface with the businesses. How do we promote things like food truck corridors or other dynamic things that can increase sort of foot traffic that will then help the businesses that are there? So I think there are some infrastructure-related things that we can do in that way. And then similarly, making sure that the folks who go there feel safe, shaded, which is really important and happy to be in our downtown space. And so all of those are things that the Elevate Las Cruces Plan kind of outlines. So there's an opportunity to do a lot there still.
Thank you. Robert?
Thank you. Great question again. What can we do to encourage downtown development? Again, that goes in for me with tourism and spending money. But my question is this, what happened to Virgin Galactic? What happened to the spaceport? What happened to all the stuff that we put money and effort and time into to let them come out and be close to us? And all these promises that we were going to benefit somehow from all these tourists coming? But we haven't done anything about it. We haven't, as a city, followed up with it. I don't see any Virgin Galactic or any spaceport cafes downtown. I don't see anything that's drawing tourists down here for that type of industry. We need to bring that up. We need to raise that up and let everybody know around the world that Las Cruces is not only a place where you can go and enjoy the spaceport and all the benefits of it, but also we have historical sites all over the place. We should take advantage of that absolutely and promote our downtown area.
Thank you. Ronnie?
How can we improve the downtown area? I think it's simple. Reduce overburdensome and underregulation on the businesses. In a nutshell, the business people, they are... In a nutshell, the business people, they are nuts and bolts individuals, which means they are in for, they're not in for a nonprofit industry, they're in it to make a living and support their families, support their children, send their children to schools, et cetera. So any way that we can help them so they can reduce their cost by reducing undue burdens and regulation, I think will improve their opportunities for success in the downtown.
Thank you very much. And David, we're going to wrap up with you on this very important question of what the city can do to further encourage downtown development.
Well, I think, as you said, further encourage, because they have encouraged it, and I've been here, like I said, 40 years, I've seen it go from a ghost town down there, and now that they've redone it, it has grown so nicely and it's a beautiful place down there. I think we just need to continue on and continue growing, get more businesses down, you know, like they said, you know, give some incentives. I know there's the TIDD, you know, the Texas incentive downtown money to, you know, buck that up, to enforce that and get more businesses down there. And I think as time goes and we have the farmer's markets down there, which was once the top in the country, that was an awesome thing that we won that honor. That kind of stuff is the tourism aspect, as we discussed earlier, that will bring more people down there and have more going on. My kids love going down there and, you know, we just have to advertise that more and continue to...
Thank you very much, David. We have reached the final question, and Robert, we're going to start with you on this final question. Should the city examine ways to launch municipal electric service?
Should the city find ways to launch municipal electric service?
That's correct.
That's kind of a new term to me, to be honest with you, but I'm going to try to guess what that means.
It means, it means electric service. The city currently provides natural gas and water and trash pickup, electric, electricity in the house.
You know what? That's a really, really great question, because in today's environment with solar energy, renewable energy, you know, who controls the power? Who controls the electricity? And, you know, I kind of think there's a monopoly right now in the entire area around us, and we don't, as citizens, have a lot of say-so about our energy. And I'd like to see more say-so about our energy. And I think by bringing that into the needs of our city, we would have a little bit more say-so about our energy and our electricity. So I would be for that.
Thank you, Ronnie.
No, I'm against that. I'm not against solar per se, and neither am I against anything that's environmentally sound as well. But I think it goes back to the same, the same type of reason, the why we decided to run. There's the issues that are troubling for Las Cruces, and this is one that is representative of it, that these are social agenda issues that's going on across the country. And that doesn't necessarily mean it doesn't have to have relevance here in Las Cruces. We've already have gas, we already have gas in the homes, is that how we're going to accomplish that? Everybody's going to, everybody's going to have to change over their gas, going to remove the gas abilities? I mean, I just don't understand. Everything works. I haven't seen anybody's homes blow up as a result of gas. You know, if it's a financial matter, you know, if a financial matter that the city is going to be generating funds, I just don't see the viability in it at all.
Thank you. Ronnie, David?
Well, as you probably remember, we tried that some years ago and had a referendum and had, you know, a whole group of people, you know, including the city mayor at that time, trying to do that. And it failed because as they researched, as they, you know, went into it and found out all the issues that were involved with it, it just became non-penable. And I think we try it again, who knows? It might be a little more so now, but I don't think this is a time for us to, you know, throw everything into that. Not only would it cost us an arm and a leg to get it set up, but then how would, you know, would it run well? I think it causes more trouble than do good. And I think, you know, our current electric servicers are trying hard with, you know, solar incentives and I don't think we should try that right now and create another...
Okay. Thank you, David. Becky, we conclude on this question with you.
The reality is, I think that El Paso Electric is making money off of the citizens of Las Cruces, all of us, even if we are solar-connected. And that revenue is going primarily to burning fossil fuels to provide our electricity, which is deeply problematic from a global warming perspective. We know that we need to do everything we can to make ourselves sustainable, and burning fossil fuels is not one of those things. So I think anything that we can do to increase use of renewable energy as a city and decrease the burden, you know, El Paso Electric is charging us for the gas use in Texas, right? Because that's part of, that's part of the system. So I don't think that that's really serving the folks of Las Cruces as best we possibly could, nor is it serving the earth. So I think that exploring every option, community solar, investing in a local grid, whatever the options are, I think it's incumbent on us to explore that for the folks of Las Cruces and for the planet. We have to do it.
The candidates in District Five, thank you so much for being with us. We are out of time for KRWG News and the League of Women Voters of Southern New Mexico. I'm Fred Martino. Thank you for being with us for Election 2021, the Las Cruces City Council District Five Forum. Next week, we conclude our municipal election forums with District Six. Have a great week.